Welcome to the August 30th, 2017 Marquette Special Budget Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cam Benzi. Commissioner Conley.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plord.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini.
Here.
And Mayor Campana.
Here. Commissioner Cam Benzi's here. I don't know why she's not up here.
Don't need to get down in the gathering.
Huh?
Don't need to get down in the gathering.
Well, she knows we're... She'll be here, so... Oh, okay. All right. She will be up. We did see... Everybody saw her there. Commissioners, we have the agenda in front of us. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second somewhere. Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Announcements? I do not have any public comments. All open public comment. If anybody wants to address the commission, now's your time. Anybody? Anybody? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda. Do you have a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Comments? Any? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-1... 7-0. We move to new business. We're going to start with the budget process here. Who's going to start it off? City Manager?
Yes.
It's all yours.
Thank you. Before we get started on the agenda, there's a... I need to readdress a couple of issues that were previously discussed at our other meetings before this. If you turn to page 69 in your budget book, please. It's in the budget, but we failed to make it obvious, and maybe you didn't notice it, but I wanted to make sure you're all aware that line item 101, 270, 710, performance pay. I put $25,000 into the budget for performance pay. If you recall, last year, we approved a after-the-fact amendment to the budget that allowed me to give each department head and/or middle manager some type of performance enhancement pay. This year, I plugged it into the budget, but I wanted you to be aware that it's in there in case you've had any comments or any questions about that. If there are none, the second item I'd like to readdress is on page 201. It's regarding the service center. And if you recall, we had a slight discussion or a short discussion on 632, 490, 740, Training Room and Community Development Furnishings. It wasn't needing any further action, but since that last meeting, I've looked into it a little bit further, and it's kind of convoluted. I wanted to explain a couple of things. First of all, that line item or that value of that furniture is actually in the area And what had happened was when we made an earlier decision to... Let me go back a step. We had originally planned for that number to be around $82,000. When we decided to move engineering out of the Lakeview Arena earlier than anticipated, we had to spend some money out of the general fund budget for the service center to accommodate the furniture in that move. So that brought this number down to the 48 you see in front of you. However, I hope I'm explaining this right. We still needed that money. That money wasn't intended to come out of that budget to cover the engineering move, so we still needed to replace that money at some point. So I've looked at this budget and this number, and in the... In an effort to be totally transparent, we still need to spend about $82,000 to balance out that service center contract in full. So I've talked to Gary, and if you look at the 999 line on that same page, 490, 999, Transfer Out Debt Service, that's a reserve that we create for the service center to accommodate future unknown expenses. So what I'd like to do after the budget is passed, if it's passed in this form, is to take that $33,000 that I need extra out of that line, reducing that by the same amount, and just the reserve will be that much less. So it's a net balance for the budget. I'm not adding any more dollars to the budget, but just to let you know that that whole year-end final project closing and getting the furniture we needed for the service center is kind of getting a little convoluted as we get near the end here. It's the last thing I should have to do with that service center, but after the October 1st budget, or after October 1st, if this budget is approved, we will probably come back to you... I know we will come back to you with the action items to purchase that final batch of furniture, which is all related to the community development, which is part of engineering. If it makes sense.
Taking 48 or 82 out of that line item?
Well, it's 48 now. We need to add, I'm sorry, 34 to it, so it comes out to 82.
Oh, so, okay.
We use that 34... We spent that 34 already to buy furniture earlier than we planned, but that money had to come from a different line within the construction budget, and I have to replace that 34 back into the construction budget to meet the final payout for the total budget for the service center. So the furniture is something that we knew we were going to have a problem with right to the end, because it was actually an addition to the service center as a whole, because community development, if you recall, wasn't planned on being there, and was one of the things that we added on later on, and we tried to squeeze all this new furniture into the same budget, and we did our best, but when it came down, we were $34,000 short, and actually $80,000, $82,000 short, but we're asking to cover 48 of that in the budget for next year, as well as the 34 coming from that reserve fund. Questions? I'm getting dizzy. I don't blame you. It took me all afternoon to figure it out, so I can start over. So you're taking 30... 82 or 34? Well, we need... We needed 82 to get all the furniture for the Community Development Department at the new service center. We were short that in the overall construction budget. We never intended to buy that furniture with the construction budget, but we were hoping through the whole process that we would have some money left over to maybe assume that debt didn't work out that way. So when... This should be 82,000. If things would have went as planned, this number you're looking at would have been 82,000. However, we had to move the Engineering Department back in July sooner than expected because we wanted to accommodate the new hockey lease there. We didn't want to lose them as a renter, so we moved the Engineering Department early, spent some money out of that construction budget that we meant for something else to cover the furniture, to get the engineering out, but now I have to replace that money out of the construction budget that I spent on the furniture earlier. Does that make sense? And so how much of it are you reducing your... The contribution to reserve? You're reducing? $34,000. So that'll be $166,000? Yeah, yes. 156... No, 166, yes. Instead of the 200,000. Right. And if, by some means, when all this shakes out, given that we did have an amendment to the Brownfield Plan Monday night, if there's some way we can reimburse ourselves through that process, if there's money left over there, we'll try to do that as well to cover that furniture. It all works out. It's hard to understand, but... Tell them, Gary. Tell them it works.
It works. So if you don't mind, we'll go ahead and get started. This is the fourth of four scheduled budget... Special Budget Sessions. Hopefully, before we leave tonight, you will have scheduled a public hearing for September 11th at the regular City Commission meeting, which hopefully, that'll be the same night we adopt the budget. So we're getting closer. Tonight, the theme is mostly what I like to call the Friends of Marquette. These are really sort of component units of the city. They aren't departments of the city, but component units. They provide services for our citizens, and they have their own separate boards, and the City Commission is required to adopt their budgets on their behalf. And then we have, at the very end, two sort of straggling departments that normally these would have been presented on the first night, but due to some schedule conflicts, we moved them to tonight. And then after those presentations, we'll throw it back into your lap, and like I said, hopefully, schedule a public hearing. But to get things started, we'll ask the people from the library if they would like to come to the table and present their budget.
I'll lead off the misfit group. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank the City Commission for the continued support of the library. As you know, we just had a very successful milledage campaign here in August and had approval of 80.61, not that I'm going to get specific on numbers, percent approval, which I think is really astounding and shows we have great support in our community. It looks as though the library will have funding from that election in early October, so we'll start on some small projects immediately with the larger projects happening spring of summer of 2018. We're very grateful to be able to move forward with repairs and updates that are needed at the library. Some comments on funding year 1718 budget. A little bit of backstory, last year was my first year at the library, and one of the first things that we did was meet with the library board and set some goals for stabilizing library funding, and we agreed on kind of a multi-year stability plan with the bond being the first part of that, so I'm happy to say that step one is complete. Moving along, we are looking towards adding and addressing some potential township funding expansions. We're looking at the feasibility of that and beginning conversations with townships about how we might expand our footprint in the townships. And third, we're looking at some major endowment fundraising campaigns, so that our fundraising is not just year-to-year, but also an endowment where we're taking distributions yearly as a better stability for library funding. Fundraising has been a part of the library financial stability plan for about 10 years. We're consistently raising 10% to 12% of our budget from fundraising measures, and I would say for a public library, that's pretty outstanding, shows pretty good support for the library as well, and we will continue to grow that as we are able. It was our hope that revenues for 1718 would be generally flat. That's kind of what we were budgeting on. Unfortunately, we've had some roadblocks there. We were hoping that we would not have to make cuts to our budget from 1617 until we were able to get some additional funding secured, but with the May 17 We Energies Tribunal and facing up to $60,000 in reduced revenue yearly, we are looking at some ways we can trim back our budget, reduce spending, come up with efficiencies. I'm sure that you'll notice in our funding year 1718 request, we're a little bit short. Projected revenues do not quite match the expenditures despite some significant cuts to the library's budget. Thought I'd give you a little bit of background or a little bit of description on what we've done with the library's budget to try and cut costs. We currently have two open part-time positions that we will not be filling. We're working with our unions to negotiate a PTO transition. That is a long-term funding measure where we're looking to reduce our PTO liability. Right now, we're carrying about $100,000 in PTO liability. It's very difficult to budget for. So we're working with our union to come up with a better, lower ceiling PTO balance per employee, and the union and the staff in general has been very agreeable to that and looking at it as a long-term cost savings for the library. We've been working with the city HR, MERS, and insurance to keep benefits good and costs low. Our union staff is willing to discuss reorganization and efficiencies in order to keep library costs in check. I know I said last year, and I think it's always important to reiterate, for libraries, it is not abnormal for 60% to 70% of your budget to go into staffing, and we run about 64%, so we're kind of in the middle of that range. Certainly not out of the ordinary. Staffing is our biggest expense, and it cannot be understated how much the library staff love working at the library and are willing to work with administration to come up with a long-term stability plan for staffing. From the 1718 budget, we were able to remove all of our furniture and building improvement funds thanks to the bond, so that's, again, not a long-term fix to the budget. It's kind of a short-term thing while the bond is taking place, but hopefully, we'll be able to reduce our need for capital improvement funds going forward, just because we're going to take care of as many building project needs as we can. We've reduced maintenance supplies, and hopefully, we'll see a reduction in energy costs. There's a few items that need to be fixed right away, and replacement of those pieces of equipment should see... We should see some energy cost savings from that, and then, of course, when we get into the bigger project and we're looking at some other large equipment, that should also... We should also see a reduced energy cost. We've reduced our material spending based on our new revenue estimates. We're trying to keep our tax revenue at 6% for library materials, so that's books, videos, all of those types of things, and then we add on to that with our fundraising efforts. So we do have one fundraiser scheduled already for 2018, and it will go directly into library materials. So we'd like to keep it closer to 10%, but that's awfully hard with the library's budget. So we are also looking at some other ways of building revenue, and basically, it's really focused on fundraising and building up those endowment and local funds. Some... One of the other areas that we would like to discuss with the City Commission for revenue building is an increase to state revenue sharing. The library has been receiving from the city $20,000 for the last two years. Prior to that, it was $11,500, and I believe it was that way for a number of years. Forever. Forever. And what we are requesting this year is an increase to 40,000, so that's a $20,000 ask, and I realize that's a big ask. So what would be the results from increased funding for the library? It would give us some time to put into place additional funding measures. The settlement, when I found out about the We Energies Tribunal taking place again, I just thought, man, they took my year. They took my year. I thought I'd have one year where we'd have, you know, stable funding, where I could work on some of these additional funding measures, so it would buy us some time. It would also build on the momentum built by the bond passing and show direct support from the City Commission. It would keep additional cuts at bay, and I think it would go a long way to retaining staff. The staff is actively working on cost cutting... Excuse me. Cost-cutting measures. We're working very directly with them on ways to improve efficiencies, and I'm sure you all understand that staff never likes to talk about improving efficiencies or cost-cutting measures when it comes to staffing. That's a very difficult thing to swallow, but they're willing to work with us on it. The public is very enthusiastic about the bond, and so are we. We're excited to get our building in shape and make some improvements that will increase our efficiencies, but we do have some pretty big hurdles coming up with operating budget concerns. There are some pretty big cuts coming down the pike with the We Energies current tribunal and eventually close, and then whenever the hospital's done and moves out of its current location, those will significantly be reduced, I'm sure, when it comes to the tax rolls. So if we're unable to find additional funding, we'll have to look at more cuts to library services, and that certainly is not something that we want to do. We're trying to be very proactive about this. Not a week goes by that I don't hear from someone, "We want Sunday hours back," and we do too, but right now, we're kind of trying to backfill funding. So Sunday hours aren't really on the table until we can get, you know, some years of stability and some buildup of operating funds. I'm confident with public... With our public support, we can regain funding to continue offering library services that are excellent. It started this August with the bond passing. That's the passing. That's the first step, and we're very optimistic that we can regain our stable funding and move library services forward in a meaningful way. Questions that you all have?
Commissioner Baldini.
I have a couple of questions for you. I noticed your budget is not balanced.
It does not.
Can you explain? Are we allowed to adopt budget? I mean, we have to adopt a balanced budget. Are we allowed to adopt the budget for them? I think they don't make it up, but...
Yeah. By state law, we... All budgets do have to balance. Now, part of that balancing mechanism could be use of fund balance or reserves, so if you decide not to fund their additional requests by 20,000, they would have to use 20,000 of their fund balance to balance that.
Andrea, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for doing the hard lifting. It's always easy to spend extra money. It's that kind of... That's a rare... Have you built that 20,000 into your revenue estimates here?
No. It has not been.
Okay, so that would be... That would be extra then, and that would balance your budget?
Yes, it would.
At least on payroll. Technology, does your technology... You probably have in-house all those young people who can do it, but...
We actually have... We have an in-house staff member who is... Who does a lot of our technology, but we also have the Superior Land Library Cooperative. They're the cooperative that we work with, and they have a number of technology resources that we also make use of. They do kind of our high-end networking, and then our in-house staff does the day-to-day PC-type computer work.
The only thing I'm thinking about is we have in-house technology, and I didn't know if there was any ability for them to assist and maybe reduce the contractual cost for the library. The... What would it cost to put Sunday hours back?
I think... Can I refer to my financial director in the audience?
Better than picking it up around here.
Yeah. Yeah. I can't... We talked a couple of different numbers.
Yeah. Somewhere in the $15,000 to $25,000 range. But the concern we have is going forward, the likelihood of reduced tax revenue, especially on the part of the city, as We Energy Plant is likely to close, and then also, as the new hospital comes on, what ends up happening with the existing facilities. Thank you.
Commissioner Conley.
Maybe between the two of you can help me with the numbers. It looks like you're about 18-5 short of spending or revenue versus spending, but you're asking for 40.
We're asking for 20.
You're asking for 20 more?
Yep.
20 more? Okay.
Yes. We get 20 currently.
Okay. Have you asked other municipalities, the townships, to step up as well?
We have not.
Do you intend to?
We do.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Plord?
I have a question for Gary. Gary, do we have the money in our budget to add money to their budget to bring back Sunday hours? Could we do that?
It certainly wouldn't break the city's budget by any means. We currently have a balanced budget, so it would just mean that we would need to budget 20,000 of our fund balance to balance the FY '18 budget.
I see.
And then, the way it usually works, you know, expenses will come in less than what we budgeted, and we should be able to make it up, although I can't homicide at this time, but officially, the budget will show the general fund of using $20,000 of fund balance for that purpose.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier?
We don't know for sure, but the hospital claims they have somebody interested in their old building. I would assume that would help out with tax base for you. I mean, they haven't said who is interested. They're probably keeping a zip on it just in case, you know, in case somebody else wants to step up the plate. They're saying somebody else is possibly interested, so that may help you out. Plus, all development, I mean, the hospital won't be paying taxes for like 10 years. I know that, but, I mean, hopefully, the new development at the old hospital might help you out just a little bit, you know, and some of the other stuff going around town might be helping you out a little bit, so hopefully, we can help you out at least a little bit.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, just think... First off, thank you, Andrea. Second, I, as reviewing this and as a commissioner, I don't particularly have any problems with, like you said, in this revenues, you're asking for 20, and now you're asking for an additional 20, and as a commissioner, I think I don't particularly have a problem with that, and I think we could come up with some way to make that happen. I know a couple of years ago, when we reduced Sunday hours, we had people calling us and yelling at us just for that, and I can't imagine if you guys can't balance your budget and you have to start cutting staff, we're going to get that same kind of thing coming at us, and how much people like the library, I'm... As a commissioner, I'd be willing to look at adding that additional 20 in.
I just want to clear one thing. What is the line item that... Where the city was giving the 20,000 each year? What's the line item number?
It's...
000? 680?
574. State revenue sharing under revenues. Yep. So yours is 574.
574, okay.
Yep.
The... You're asking for an additional 20,000 to balance your books, so in effect, if we say we want Sunday back, which you said would cost between 15 and 25,000, depending how you do it, so we probably then should give you 40,000, because you need the 20 to balance your books, and if we mandated Sunday, that would be an additional cost.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Just clarify that.
Commissioner Conley?
Some of the new tech... Some of the new technology you're intending, or you'd said you were intending on purchasing for, with the bond proceeds. Will that enable you to reduce staff as you maybe have an automated checkout system or something like that?
We hope it'll be, it'll allow our staff to be used differently. So I don't know that it will necessarily reduce the number of hours that our staff work, but they may be able to do things other than only checkout materials, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Commissioner Plard.
But you've already mentioned, Andrea, that you have two open positions that you don't intend to fill. So in fact, that's a staff reduction as well.
Correct.
So that's, that's working on it.
And those are page positions. So our, our staff is just willing to, to step up and do the work that needs to be done to cover those hours.
Putting books away, helping people to bookshelves and different places.
Correct.
So are we at the twenty thousand, or are we at the twenty plus another twenty, twenty-five? What are we asking here? You're asking for another twenty. Do you want the, are you asking for Sunday hours to be reopened?
I had, I really had not anticipated this. Well, when we had, we, we had discussed this, obviously, with Gary and Mike to see if it was even something that was feasible for the city's budget. And we had talked about twenty thousand dollars. The library certainly wouldn't turn down extra money from the city.
But we are talking about twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty on top of the twenty.
Right.
We're just talking about the twenty so they can balance their budget.
Right.
And as I said, they will approach, you know, other municipalities for funding. And it's, would be my hope, if they could raise that funding, then maybe they could use that to maybe fund Sunday services or some kind of thing. But that's just my thought. But for now, I would just like to focus on the twenty thousand dollars.
Let's focus on the twenty, okay. Commissioner Conley, you got a question?
Are you, is it possible that you could get the fifteen to twenty-five as you went around to your other municipalities?
I don't know, that's a good question. You know, we had been thinking about looking at feasibility for increasing our township revenues through regaining our one mill. Of course, you all understand the heavily rollback and how that process works. So we are rolled back in all of our townships. Chocolay is, I think we're almost at three-quarters of a mill in Chocolay. So that was kind of our, our thoughts with regard to the townships was kind of getting everyone back on even playing ground, you know, so all the townships were contributing equally. We hadn't really thought about directly talking to the township boards, it's certainly a possibility.
I mean, if we stepped up for an extra twenty, you might be able to say, well, the city's kicked in twenty, and we'd like to spread the other twenty out amongst our other municipalities. Kind of a matching, a matching grant.
Right.
You could approach other municipalities who aren't participating in funding for the library? Are there some townships that aren't participating that could be, should be?
Yeah, Powell Township is certainly, it's a township we did have a contract with at one point in time, and it failed in twenty fourteen? I think twenty fourteen was the last time we were on the ballot in Powell Township, and it did not pass. I think by seven votes.
I was going to say, not a lot of people vote there, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I have spoken with the township supervisor in Powell, and they're willing to put us on the ballot. So that's something that we're also investigating.
If they were to pass it, how much would you raise in Powell Township?
Keep looking at Rick, he has these numbers right on the top of his head.
It's actually the third largest township that, so it's actually seventy-five thousand dollars. A very significant number.
You would raise seventy-five?
But again, I got to point out the unknowns of how much we could lose when We Energy closes. That's a hundred and four, a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty thousand right now that we could potentially lose when that power plant closes. Now, it keeps getting shrunk with each of these tax tribunal settlements, so. So of the hundred and twenty, if, if they've got what they're demanding right now, we would lose sixty thousand additional. So now, it'll be at sixty thousand, but it's still a very large number that we're talking about. So that's, that's where, how we're kind of approaching this is that these are offsets against what we conceivably can lose in revenue going forward. Now, if something was to develop at the old hospital that kept the, the value of that close to what it is right now, it's, it's above fifty-five thousand dollars that comes to us from the current hospital. And we're anticipating, when the new hospital is open, a significant reduction will happen to that, that campus out, out there. Now, if that doesn't happen, then, then that's great for the library and also for the city.
How does that work?
Commissioner Conley.
And then, you are not included in the TIF though. So as they open the new facility, you get the money from the new facility, isn't that right?
No, no, we are locked out for twenty-four years.
So you're, you're part of the, your interest is part of the TIF?
I mean, we are locked out.
Brownfield. Is that right? I thought that was.
So all we will retain is the value of the, of the existing campus and whatever that assessed value is.
But just to point out too, nobody was receiving tax money from that property anyway, because we had the service center on it, and it was owned by the city, so nobody was getting taxes. So it's not like it's a loss to anybody at this point, so.
Commissioner Conley.
I'd like to point out, as we, as you go to the township and you tell them, okay, it's not that the city's kicking in twenty, we are kicking in twenty, you're asking us to kick in forty. And then ask the townships to step up as well for something like, and if you, if you gave it to them as, we're trying to open up on Sundays, you'd probably get a lot of people backing you for that. Plus the fact that, okay, city taxpayers are already in two and three-quarter mills, something like that.
Right, it's, well, it's under two.
It's under two now?
Yeah.
Even with the new?
The operating is at one point three-six or so, and then the new.
It brings it back up to almost, okay. So almost two mills, and then, plus now forty grand. And I'm not opposed to it, but I just think you can use that to say, well, look, city's kicking in forty a year. Can you help out, and let's, we're going to dedicate this to Sundays?
Commissioner Plard.
Andrea, in your opinion, and the opinion of your staff, is that something we should do? Open the library on Sunday? Would you, would you get the, the use of the library?
Well, I think you can see from our statistics that the year that we closed on Sundays, our statistics took a pretty good hit. If you compare, if you compare back more than two years, it's significantly different.
But based on your personal experience and the experience of your staff and what they're telling you, with the people that are coming in and saying, you know, we're looking forward to Sunday hours. As a manager, do you think that's something the library probably should do to be in service to the community?
Absolutely. Our concern is the, the financial stability of the library. I mean, that's where we've really, the next couple of years with changes in the tax base, we've been real hesitant to even try and add Sunday hours back because of, you know, additional cuts that we see are on the horizon. But as far as service the community goes, absolutely.
It's something the community wants and misses and.
You know, it's, it's one of those things where if, if you're a working family, Sunday may be the only day you can get to the library. You know, you work, you work Monday through Friday, your kids are involved in whatever it is on Saturday, and Sunday's the only day that you can make it to town and go to the library. Especially during the winter, we hear it all the time. Because, you know, people want things to do, and the, and the library's a great place for them to go. So as far as service to the community, a hundred percent, yeah. It's, it would be very important to, to bring Sunday hours back.
Your, I'd like to make a suggestion just for our consideration. I think, from, from my opinion anyway, right now, at this point, I think that's something we should seriously consider, but not make a move on it yet. There's a lot of things we can think about. I think Commissioner Conley's got some ideas, other Commissioner, you know, Mayor Pro Tem Baldini, all of us probably have some ideas on how to make this work, so, you know, and, and certainly, you know, we need to talk to Gary and, and, you know, the chief financial officer and the city manager. But I, I think it's something we should consider and, and really take a hard look at before, before the budget takes place in October first.
All right, you're first. Go.
Okay, so, so if the building is open on Sundays, that would also open up the building for arts and cultures programming down in the basement, wouldn't it? Which, I mean, if, if you're, if the library's closed, arts and culture and events like a Sunday afternoon concert or something like that can't take place.
Correct.
So this would, this would allow the community to benefit from all three levels? Okay.
All this conversation on opening up on Sunday is really something we really can't settle right now. I mean, that's all, it's out there, potentially could happen. What we got, what are we concerned about here? Is the twenty thousand, is that, is that the problem? My question to you then, do, do we have the twenty thousand to give to the library? Can you find it, can you find it?
Yeah, like I said, we would have to adopt the budget showing we're using twenty thousand dollars of fund balance in general fund to do this, and we can certainly do that.
Straight out of the general fund, our general fund to their fund?
Yeah.
We can do that?
That's not an issue, yeah.
Okay.
But I strongly suggest we really think about giving them more than the twenty thousand if you're talking about opening it up for a Sunday hours, say.
Do we have the money to do that?
I will strongly say we don't want to go down that road right now, so.
Wait, you're saying, do not go for Sunday hours?
I'm saying, that's what I'm, that's what I'm strongly saying, yes.
Perhaps the Sunday hours will come from, if we get seventy-five thousand from another township or something, something. Okay, so right now, we're concerned about the twenty thousand from our general fund. That's what we want to say yes to right now?
And that will help the library balance their current budget.
Okay.
And that's without the Sunday hours.
Okay, so can we concentrate on that?
What, it's an additional twenty thousand? They get twenty thousand now, and they're asking for an additional twenty.
Correct. Commissioners, who's next, Tom?
I think Gary raised an interesting point. We give them twenty now, to get an additional twenty, we're at forty. Remember, people of the city just voted to extend the village. Not the people serviced by the library, but the city for, and, and we voted overwhelmingly for it, okay? And I think the city made a, or the people in the city made quite a statement about that. And I think Gary, Gary's saying is, we give them the additional twenty, that has to come out of fund balance. And so if we go further, we have to take more money out of the fund balance. And so, and, and I think, that's not a decision we make tonight, something in totality. We look at what else is having to come out of fund balance between now and when we have our public hearing at, at that point. And I think one other question, not just Sunday, but what would it cost to do winter Sunday? You know, and that's not something we should decide here at the table, but maybe those are numbers that we look at. One other question, you have an endowment, how big is your endowment? I mean, if you, you have, you take funds out to help balance your budget.
We have, we have the Carapal Trust, and we use that to supplement our budget for music funding. It was designated for, for music funding, that's around seven hundred thousand?
Seven, seven eighty.
So we take about a thirty thousand dollar endowment from that every year. Our, our annual fund is actually not an endowment, it's just the fundraising part. Right now, our library-only endowment is a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, over, it's now over a hundred thousand.
So we haven't been taking distributions from that because we're trying to build it. Yep, so, but we are fundraising at about the tune of two hundred thousand dollars a year between fundraising and grants.
That's your, two hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. But to build an endowment is a whole other thing, because you're, we have to keep fundraising at that level and then at, have the additional ask from, you know, the public to build that endowment. And it's not money that you can just turn around and use, you're putting it in the bank for future distribution, so. It's a little bit harder to get people to contribute for that.
Okay, Commissioner Frazier.
I have a problem with the extra twenty. Going through Sunday, Sunday hours might be a little difficult, but Gary said, Gary balances the budget every year, we don't, so, I mean, he's the expert, but, I mean, maybe you could, Mike could talk to DLP, people, once in a while, you could talk to them. It'd be a good way for them to be good, if you can, to give you a few bucks to help you with, you know, go towards the Sunday hours, or like the, your, your version of Gary said, you might have to not do Sundays because if, when We Energy goes, you're going to be tight on budget then, so maybe you use a reserve fund or something. By the way, you may want to talk to, you know, maybe you could talk to them, maybe when Mike talks to them, you could say, I got a question, would you be willing to support the library? Give them, I mean, they, they help the Beacon House, which is part of the hospital now. Maybe they'd be able to help you out a little bit, you know? If any of us see anybody from the hospital, we'll, we'll mention it to them, maybe? Maybe they could help you out going towards, and maybe the extra township money could go towards that? You're going to go around and ask somebody? Maybe whatever you get from the townships, DLP could maybe match, you know, whatever you need. Say you got like ten or fifteen from everybody else, maybe hospitals kicking like five or something. Just say, you have to pay us taxes for twenty-plus years, so would you be willing to give us a little bit of money just to help out with Sunday hours or something like that? So anyway, you get some experts, play your games.
Okay, we're stalled here, we got to keep moving. Where are we at?
They presented the budget for us, and we'll have to have a discussion overall, but.
Yeah.
We really need a direction on what you want to do with the twenty thousand.
My question again to you, we're going to give them twenty thousand, and we're going to give them, and then the question, do we give them another twenty thousand? Which is forty thousand?
Forty thousand.
You seem to think that that money could be available.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Anybody else want to know anything? Move along? How do we feel about this? Seems to be positive.
Did Paul the Commissioner, your honor?
No, we're not, we're not going to do that. He knows. You have a feeling?
Yes, I, I got the message.
Let's move it.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Move on.
And thank you, Andrea, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next up, we ask Mina from the DDA.
No, I'm asking for eight thousand. Yeah.
It's about those meters.
Oh, yeah, all about the meters. Okay, who's going to clean the sidewalks? Pave the, pave the parking lots? Okay, I guess this doesn't get any easier. It's my eighteenth budget presentation to the Commission. And we've changed our format over the years. We used to do a separate submission and found that it's much easier just to do the same format that other city departments do. So I know you're on page two oh four of your budget book, I think for our overview and fact sheet. I'm just going to just talk real quick, I have just a summary. Taxable value for twenty, be twenty sixteen, really for twenty, twenty seventeen, is fifty-four million, one thirty-five, eight fifty-four. And that is an, an increase up from six percent from last year's taxable value with the district. And ten-year average for property value increase for district properties is just right under seven percent. And we have stayed really not only stable, we've stayed above certainly what's happened in, in the state of Michigan with property values. Right now, the average since two thousand eight for property values in the state is actually down, still down twenty-four percent. So we, as a city, really have been fortunate. I think if you look at the impact on the recession in property values, if you look at it on. on the recession in property values, if you look at it on the internet and look at Michigan, you will see that Marquette is number one as far as recovery of property values, number one, or property values never went down during the recession, and followed by Traverse City. So it's an interesting, it's an interesting graph, and it's interesting information. So we have 280 properties within the district, 77 on North Third Street, 203 in the original or what we, I guess, call historic downtown now. We still have an outstanding bond issue. It was taken out in 2011 at 1.5 million for restoration of the Bluff Street parking structure. We still have a little bit over a million dollars on that debt. We have a contract with the city for maintenance of the downtown and management of the downtown, management of parking. That contract will expire in September 2018, so sometime probably in January or February, we'll be coming back and present and, you know, see what the city commission's pleasure is as far as renewal of that contract. We do the sidewalk, all the sidewalk maintenance, 6.6 miles of it with my maintenance staff. We manage seven of the city's public parking lots, the parking structure. We have three elevator towers, stairway towers, access towers, and five pedestrian walkways that we maintain. We also install over 280 flower baskets, flags, whatever the decorations seem to be for the season. We have closed out the Delft Grant Project. We had our public hearing, as you know, on Monday night. And also, the 215 South Front Street and the facade grants, we closed all those out that, this year, that was just a little bit, I think it's about 1.5 million in grants we brought in over the last two years that we just completed. We have implemented park phase one and two of the parking plan and strategy. Originally, there were less meters to be installed, but we received a really good price on the purchase of the meters, so my board directed me to go ahead and implement all of the parking meters. And I'm kind of glad we did it all at one time now, so that everything, it all comes back to us at once. We have 300 and, 380, I said 385, we actually have 383 meters, three pay stations, two in the Bluff Street parking ramp, one that's going to go in the North Main Street lot. It is not yet operational. We are easing into that, that's going to be a tough one. We have raised funds for charitable organizations. We do the Downtown Spring Open, and the proceeds from that go to the Jansen House for their building fund. We also do our ladies' night, we do a little campaign for that, and we raise around $2,000 for the Women's Center. And I just came from a check presentation for the Women's Center for the new Classic Cars on Third that we worked with the Dupers family on, and we were able to present a check for almost $14,000 to the Women's Center for that. And we were pleased to be able to help and work with individuals in a downtown business to put on an event, so that it wasn't all our staff. I'm not going to go through our sponsored events, we do a lot of them. I'm going to talk a little bit about the cost of some of these events in a little bit. But anyway, that's kind of an overview of our operations. And then we also have some recommended schedule fees that we're looking for approval from the commission. Most of them are the same as last year, except for a few. We would like to increase the 24-hour permit to $45 a month from 30 a month. There are additional costs when people are parked in the parking lots overnight. There's additional plowing, there's additional cleanup, so we would like to increase that. Also, we would like to look at the farmer's market booth from 150, which for a festival of the size that we have, I think is very reasonable, to $165. And that is for, not for a downtown business, but for outside vendors coming in. And this year, we had over 90 outside vendors, and we think that this might help modify some of the applicants by just raising that fee a little bit. And we would also, whoops, I'm sorry, that was 100. We want to go from 75 to 100. For the farmer's market, we'd like to go to 165 a season. That is not unreasonable, it's a 24-week season. You know, you heard a presentation on the economic benefit, not only to the city, but to our local farmers, to our local vendors, on the benefit of that farmer's market. And we're putting about 1.5 million dollars in income to these vendors through that market. So I think 165 certainly is reasonable, so we are asking you for that. And then I'm just going to go through kind of the highlights of the budget. The projected revenue is 1.57 million, 1.571612. I don't probably need to bore you with all the digits. 250,000 of that is hopefully projected grant funds. Meter revenues of 203,828, and that is an increase from what we expect, about 75,000 for this year. That is, I think, very conservative. When I run the, what I think are the real numbers, it's closer to probably 300,000. My treasurer wanted me to be very conservative with this. As we, as people get used to using these meters, I discounted what I thought is the use by about 60%. Also, increase in parking rental permits. We have seen a large jump when we put the meters in. Employees that were parking on the streets are now purchasing long-term rental permits, so they're parking in the parking lots. I think that has pretty much stabilized now. And then, just mention that we have increased, we continue to increase and work to raise event and promotion sponsorships. And this year, we look to raise about $36,000. And that helped us set some of the costs of certainly putting these events on. And also, again, some of that is, will be flow-through money because it goes back to organizations if we're partnering with them for a fundraiser. So then, as far as projected expenditures, 1.66 million. And that includes operating expenditures of just under $1,995,338. Personnel costs, I'm just going to hit the highlights, the big numbers. Personnel costs of 476,000, that's about 45% of the total budget. Utilities for the parking lots is right around $50,000. Promotion and events, we put about $61,000 in promotions and events. The farmer's market costs about $53,000. Meter operations, now that we have the new meters, there is a cost for the internet connection for those, a monthly cost for those. And also, if people use credit card, there's a per, whatever it's called, the fee for each usage of that. So that's going to be about $33,000 just for meter operations. Professional services is 65,000, and that professional service line item, we put that in. Well, one thing we have to cover is we have a contract with the Chamber of Commerce for the calendar, so we owe them, I think, $3,000 annual fee for that. And then, some additional funding to start to look towards some market analysis, and hopefully some assistance in doing some, I hate to call it branding, but for lack of a better word, branding. So we're looking to hopefully contract to do something with that. I really want, hands-on, I don't want another report to put onto the bookshelf, so I'm really looking for someone that can come in and really help us develop a work plan. Snow removal is about $45,000 a year for the parking lots. Architecture and engineering, we put $30,000 in to hopefully hire our engineer to help us with the Berge Avenue project. The Berge Avenue project, we know it's out there, it's a long-term goal, but we'd really like to start working toward that so that we can figure out how much funding we need for that. I don't know if we'll bond, I don't know if we'll pay out of our fund balance. We won't know until we can see how much that's going to cost. So we put $30,000 in for that to get site drawings and costs. Holiday lights, we spend about $18,000 to put the lights in the trees, $5,000 for Matson Park, and $12,000 throughout the downtown. And we spent about $13,000 on the flowers, the flower baskets, and landscaping. We did put some money in for capital projects, just as a side. This year, we had funding for West Washington Street and North Front. City engineering is overburdened with the work that they have, so they really couldn't help us with West Washington, so we pushed that off to next year. So that's about 200,000. But we also have another 200,000 that we're going to spend on North Front Street this year. We've been systematically going back and working to replace these sidewalks, the bricks, you know, they move, they shift. So pull out the old bricks, put in new concrete, new colored concrete, and we're actually going to start that project in the next couple of weeks. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed for the weather on that one. So some of that funding, you're going to see actually out of next year, because we're zero-based budget. So as these cash transactions come up, that's really when you're going to see the spending out of that. And we have a little bit for other kind of maintenance issues. And then, as we did, went through our budget discussions, the DDA board would like to see us do a small facade grant, local facade grant program in the district. So I put $35,000 in the budget for that. The policies and procedures still need to be established for that, we've not done that yet, although the DDA board would like to see that to be about a 2.1 ratio. So for every $2 that a property owner would put in, they'd be eligible maybe for a dollar, additional dollar of improvement money, and there would be a cap on that, I think probably about $5,000. And then, our debt service and bond interest is just under 150,000, 146,980. And then, as you can see, our revenue doesn't match our expenditures, so we do have a drawdown on our fund balance of about $91,680. So, that is pretty much my summary. As you look at the budget, if you look at detail, you're going to see the farmer's market does not show the $53,000 budget item. A lot of those costs, excuse me, a lot of those costs are buried into wages, salaries, I don't separate those out. We're small, I don't think that we need to do that. However, the supplement for the farmer's market is just under $40,000. So that's where we are. The parking fund next year, if the, if the, if the meter revenue stay, is, comes in at around 200,000, we'll still be short of about 100,000 in that parking fund. But I look for that to, I look for two years to recover that, and we should be able to, the parking fund should be sustainable. So.
Commissioner Baldini.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do in the community and keeping the downtown and Third Street. We're looking forward to Berge. You have here anticipated revenue from parking, 352,000. Is that parking and meters?
Well, that is meters and parking rentals. Parking rentals bring in about 100 and some thousand, yeah.
You've upped meters this year, what, 100% the cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, so how come parking permits haven't gone up to reflect that?
Well, parking permits.
Permits. I mean, I get in trouble for even asking the question, but if.
You're talking about people that buy permits so they can park long-term in a.
Yeah.
It has gone up a little bit. I think that's stable, that's going to stabilize.
But you've got 17 fees and 18 fees, identical except for two places.
Okay, let me look.
I mean.
Let me see.
Parking permit full-time.
Okay, parking revenues, okay. We, our budget for 2017 was 261,000, that is not, we anticipate, we anticipate about just a little bit over 220. And if you add the $200,000 we anticipate from parking meters, that is up from.
But I'm saying, the people who go downtown and have to use the meters.
Yes.
Have to put two quarters in now.
Well, they had to put two quarters in last year, too.
Not for a half hour.
Well, they don't have to put 50 cents in for a half hour now, they only need a quarter for a half hour.
I know, but what I'm saying is, the people who come downtown and shop, their fees have increased by 100%.
Oh, well, that's, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
By 200, we're thinking 150,000, yeah.
If I buy a permit.
Yeah.
The rates for 17 are the same from 17 to 18.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm just suggesting that maybe parking permits, I mean, you pay, if I want to park a full-time parking permit, it's $25 a month.
It's about a buck a day.
Okay, so next month, next year, it's going to be the same thing?
Could be.
Well, that's what you're saying here on the page that you provide.
Oh, well, yeah, 2018, yeah. When you say next year, I'm already into next year, okay.
So all I'm suggesting is, if we're increasing the parking rates for the people who drive downtown and park and shop in the stores, why aren't we doing the same thing for people who are, and I just thought I'd mention that. I know it's not going to be popular with people who buy the permits, but fair is fair.
Okay.
The, the, and I, yeah, and then you explain some of the other increases in your professional services and things of that nature, so thank you.
Commissioner Frazier.
Pretty good job running the city through the DDA, you did a pretty good job. I didn't know if, what those ladies want to do with the condos on top of the wine bar, would that increase the value of the building? Would then Gary give more money through taxes? I mean, that's not, that's probably one of Mike's people that could answer, but.
Yeah, we'd have to ask the assessor.
Would that be, the building would increase in value if it's got more facilities? I don't know, I'm just, that's probably a question.
Well, there's not really any facilities, more facilities, it's just spread out over different, more taxpayers.
Probably more people, might be more money, and there, I don't know, might be worth more, who knows?
I hope so.
With raising the fees for the, I know farmer's market is a good place, and they get a lot of vendors from out of town. You have to look at, you have to maybe look at, if you do raise the fee for them, ask them if they'd be okay with that, and have something in there, like I suggested with the Marina Fund before about, I know we used to have a full parking lot for boat storage before, and then the city raised the fee for out-of-towners, and it shrank to almost half. So you make, look at, maybe more local people would do it, maybe less people from out of town, but you have to look at, you know, okay, I raised the fees, did the amount of people on the farmer's market go down, you know, the vendors part, did that go down or up? You may have to look at that eventually, but, you know, we'll see how that goes, and they go overall, I think you're doing a pretty good job.
Thanks.
I just want to get something clear here, Mona. If you could explain to me the difference between the parking permit full-time and what, where is that, where is that? And parking permit, 24-hour permit? I don't know the difference.
All right. The difference is that we have so many residents in downtown now that do not have dedicated parking for their buildings, and the condominiums are one of them. And the apartments that were there before they were the condominiums were one of them. And so we have, to support residential increase, the DDA has set up a policy that we will give out so X amount of permits, however many. I think that we set the policy at 10% of the available public parking in lots, except for the Lake Shore Lot, because there is a deed restriction on that one, for people that live downtown. So they are purchasing basically a 24-hour permit to live and park in a downtown public parking lot. So that would be your 24-hour one. The other full-time permit would be someone who works downtown and purchases a hangtag to park in the parking lot for an extended period of time, so there are not time limitations, the two-hour, whatever it may be, for them to park and work.
So they can park downtown?
In any parking lot during the day while they work.
Any parking lot, not a Main Street or Washington Street?
No, in a parking lot, in a non-metered lot, a non-metered space.
Commissioner Conley.
So the full-time parking permit, full-time, that just means they can park during the day, and it's not a normal spot?
Correct, correct.
Okay. If I may, do I still have the form? I just wanted to say that because of the work that your organization and your members do, you've brought an identity to Marquette. I think people now identify with downtown. I can remember a time when they didn't. I know of communities that have kind of created a Hollywood downtown because they didn't have one, you know. Committee like Novi tried to create it downtown. We, those of us know that it's not a real downtown. And there's no loyalty there, but people. And there's no loyalty there, but people are loyal to this, they come to it, they use it, they enjoy it. And it makes Marquette, makes the city of Marquette part of what we are. So I thank you for that. For all the flack you're getting over the parking fees, it's a buck and a half a day for a 24-hour space? What downtown, anyplace on this earth can you park for a buck and a half? It wouldn't get you five minutes, it wouldn't even get you in the driveway. Most places that I know of, I travel a lot and I pay a lot for parking. So, and 50 cents an hour? Come on. You know, it's like eight bucks an hour if you go to some places. 50 cents, please. You know, for what you get. And that means you get to walk 10 feet to go in the shoe store. And you can, of course, it's free if you want to walk a block and a half. In fact, you probably have to walk farther if you're parking at Walmart in any other time than four in the morning. So I just want to support you in your continued.
Thanks.
Efforts to improve parking and services that you provide for all of us because that's one, that's a revenue source for what we enjoy.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Well, Mana, I was just going to echo what Commissioner Conley said, and I also, you know, we had a couple commissioners had discussion about the parking permits and the full-time and all of that. But I think most of the people that buy these permits are people that are service industry people and people that work in restaurants and things like. My husband has one of these passes, so he can park and work at the ORDOC every month. And it's actually, and they all have to have these to do that. So I think that it's pretty reasonable for, you know, the people that are actually purchasing these things, and it makes a lot of sense. And from what, I remember I had a talk, I think I spoke with you or one of your employees, about the 24-hour parking permits. Aren't they like extremely hard to get to and popular? Like, don't you have, it was like hard to get, I was trying to get one for somebody.
Yeah, we have had to actually, as a, come up with a policy. The DDA Board came up with a policy of not more than 10%. I guess you have to look at, you know, there's two ways of looking at it. Philosophically, you look at it as if, is it a pub, is it a public entity's obligation to provide parking for building owners' residents? But then, on the other hand, you look at it and you want to encourage residential in the downtown. And so there has to be some type of way to provide parking where there is no parking for these property owners that have residential. So it's a struggle, it's a struggle in our office, it really is. Because, you know, you got, if we lived in Florida, we wouldn't care. But we don't, we live in Marquette, Michigan, and we've got seven months of snow removal that we have to be concerned about. And we've got snowbanks that take up some parking spaces. And so, yeah, it's been a real struggle. And also the increase actually in employees that have bought the day parking permits, it just shot up when we put the meters in because obviously they were all parking on the streets, right? So we've been getting complaints that the parking lots are full. So, I mean, there's going to come a time that we'll have to, you know, we're going to have to, obviously, after a year, I'd like to, you know, go back in. We're going to do some measurements, we're going to do some reevaluations and see how parking is, how it's being distributed, how it's being used. An interesting one is the parking lot on Lake, in the Lakeshore, the Lakeshore parking lot that we did way back when, in, I don't know, 2000 or whatever. And when Upfront closed, that parking lot basically is vacant. I mean, it was vacant. So as we were getting complaints about the meters and whatever, and so we actually had the discussion of maybe that parking lot should be converted to free employee parking because it's not being used, right? There's 178 parking spaces there. Well, if you've tried to park in that parking lot since Iron Bay Restaurant opened, you cannot find a parking space. I mean, it's not just Iron Bay, obviously, there's a lot of tourists in town that are parking down there because it's on the water and you can walk along the bike path and bike along the bike path. So it's really interesting. So, you know, it's hard to say, I'm going to put this parking space in or save it, or this parking lot, or we're going to regulate this parking lot for a specific business, which is, we get a lot of requests to do. And you can't do that because businesses turn over and things turn over. So you have to constantly monitor this parking. I don't know if that helps or not, but.
Thanks.
Commissioner Frasier.
I see you got $5,000 for putting up the lights in the trees during Christmas time. I know, I know somebody does that for you.
$18,000, yeah.
What do you think about just, I mean, I used to, I have to use a truck to get the lights on my house and I just leave them up year-round, plug them in during the festival and unplug them in the night. Something you could look at maybe is just leaving them up, turn them on during festivals.
I don't think that the city arborist, number one, I don't think the city arborist really likes us to do that.
Well, you could work, you work with Mike's guys about trying to see if you could do it, might save you a few bucks.
Yeah, it'd be great, but yeah, I don't think he likes that much.
Thing, you mentioned the Iron Bay and the Mexican restaurant, obviously, proper places. I know a couple cities have problems, the freight trucks have had problems finding a place to park to unload them. So work with, maybe Blake has a traffic parking advisory, you could work with them and try to figure out some sort of, like a freight unloading zone or something like that. Work with the restaurant and say, okay, what hours do you receive your stuff? Maybe have a freight unloading in a certain spot, like 10:00 AM to 12:00 or something like that. When they're not busy, I mean, they're obviously busy at all times, but maybe a certain time they could have the truck go in there and park and unload their freight. Might be easier than, I know, I'm sure Blake's guys got a phone call that one time a truck was parked on Lakeshore and blocking all the traffic. And, I mean, just something to, something for you to think about, maybe looking into. I know a couple people have asked about that, you know, something you could maybe look into, maybe Blake's traffic guys could look into. Whoever could figure out some way to make it, because obviously, busy restaurants and they're going through a lot of food. Maybe make them, make their life easier. I know you don't want to lose parking spots because people love to park there, except for the winter, but.
Oh, I think we would do that in a minute if we could control these deliveries. You cannot control these delivery people. I have, I, we, we've tried to work with the restaurants, we have tried to work with the companies. You can't. We had a horrible situation during Blueberry Festival. Two years in a row, we have asked them, please do not deliver at that, during that time, that we're trying to get these vendors, these 90 vendors moved onto Washington Street and Front Street. You can't work with them.
Really? That's too bad. You think, I mean, I know with our company with deliveries, you're scattered depending on what they have, they're set deliveries all over the place. So maybe, that's too bad, they can't, they can't work with them and say, okay, can we just make deliveries this day or something? It's too bad you can't work with them, I know.
If I had a restaurant, I certainly wouldn't want my deliveries coming in at a quarter to 12.
Yeah.
In the middle of the afternoon. But they, they're at the mercy of these.
Their delivery schedule, I know with our delivery schedule, we could ask people, well, can I get this? Well, no, there's five other people in front of you, maybe that's the problem is there. But I don't know, maybe, maybe just designate a freight unloading area, maybe just sacrifice a few parking spots, maybe move them off to Lakeshore Park or something like that. Just designate a few spots and say, okay, this is going to be freight unloading, so the truck's going in all times of the day. You can't reserve aspersion time, so maybe you have to just find some way to, maybe Mike can sell them a direct chapter for you.
I was going to say, I think he's had experience with that.
We have Commissioner Baldini.
Just a quick question and something that we're not going to solve here today. Should we begin thinking that as more apartments complexes come online downtown, that you, because you would have to then up the 10% parking formula that you have? I mean, it's just something that we have to keep in mind as we, because we want to encourage more people coming downtown. And some do come with cars.
We do, and I think, you know, there are other, there are also private property owners in the district that have private parking lots that really could rent their parking lots out at nighttime and make money for residents if they would choose to do that and work with us to do that. That would be a shared parking and it would be a win-win.
Commissioner Conley.
Good luck with that.
You haven't had much luck with it.
I'd like to, every time I go to an MML and talk to a planner, they emphasize that, that good urban, particularly downtown planning, planning includes residential. So I'd like you, I'd like to encourage that you hang in there.
Yeah.
That it's working now. And if we have a mix of retail, restaurants, business offices, and then residential, that's the mix we're looking for. That's what keeps our downtown alive and vital, if people live down there. So if there's some resistance among your members of they want to take over that parking that would otherwise be used for the residential, just remind them that, that that mix is important for their long-term benefit as well. At least according to the planners.
You're absolutely right, all the research tells you that. And, you know, I think eventually, as if we keep growing the way we're growing and as we continue to fill buildings and develop, we'll probably, well, not probably, we're going to have to look at feasibility, start a feasibility study for another parking structure and where that parking structure would be located.
Parking structures, very, very expensive.
They are, but you gotta, you gotta build up, you can't build out.
We have no room to build out, huh? I know there's not a lot of room downtown.
You gotta build up.
Too bad. Commissioner Baldini.
Maybe you'll be able to get one for free if you volunteer to take it on College Avenue, but anyway.
Yeah, that would help us a lot.
How's parking on Third Street? I mean, in terms of long-term parking and businesses picking up volume-wise?
Well, you know, the issue on Third Street is it's hard to measure because all we have are 100 parking spaces on street. Every business has their own parking.
Has their own.
So it's pretty hard to evaluate that. You know, certainly, we're going to continue to do that. But if we could get again, which we won't be able to do, but if we could get some shared agreements with some of the business, some of the property owners, that we could lease it for a dollar and maintain it. And, but that's, that's, event, I mean, eventually, all of this will, will come full circle, but it's, it takes many, many years.
Where are we?
My dad?
Yes, thank you, Mana.
Any more questions here? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mana. We now ask the Brownfield if they would present their budget, please.
Well, it's been a very interesting year since we were back here to talk about the budget and lots of things going on. First off, I would like to take a moment just to say thank you for the efforts and support that the city has provided to the Brownfield Authority. And thank you for the excellent board members. We now have a new one onboard with us. And our board is just phenomenal. We have such a great mix of variety and interest and experience that I think we have a very, very proactive board that, you know, has really terrific ideas. And I think we're seeing their good work throughout the community. And I also want to acknowledge the support of the city administration and staff that has been absolutely essential to the Brownfield Authority. Mary, Jen LaPage, the city manager, and the other staff members, Gary, have been so very supportive of the efforts that the Brownfield Authority has put forward. I think we have a really good relationship. We like to look at the authority as traveling in tandem with the city so that we are carrying out the overall vision of the city along with developing the projects that we're doing. Today, as a matter of fact, we were the focus, the, we, the, a Brownfield project was the focus of the MEDC meeting. They're doing their presentations around the state and they wanted to be at a Brownfield, specifically a Brownfield in Marquette, of which they were most proud. And so they were at the Stabird Suites. And it was a pleasure to introduce them and to welcome them to the city's Brownfield project and to have them look out the window at another pretty great Brownfield project. So I think that was pretty significant. They had State Senator Tom Casperson and two other state reps that were there in addition to some of your commissioners that were there. So I think they got a pretty good sense that the city has it all together when it comes to Brownfield and, and progress. One of the things I wanted to share with you is, I know Marquette has gotten a lot of attention, a lot of varieties. And I have, on behalf of the Brownfield Authority, I've submitted a poster competition for the National Brownfield Association Conference, which happens in Philadelphia in December. And they'll be making a decision on that fairly soon. And if selected over the nationwide entries, we'll have the opportunity to go and show off our Brownfield project. So I'm hopeful. And if not this time, we'll keep doing it. But I'm really hopeful that we'll have that opportunity to, to show off what we can do. So you have, one of the other things I would add to that, in the, the things that, that make the city pretty special, one of the projects that is a Brownfield project that had an opportunity to enhance another city activity, and that was the Father Marquette Park. With the access to the Founder's Landing Project, we had the opportunity to work together on that so that the costs will be reimbursed for a small portion of that project, which will enhance the city. So it's those kinds of things that we look at in the projects in addition to what we're doing right now and how it's going to benefit. But what are the other complementary things that can go in there? So with that, we'll move on to the budget. And I guess I would ask if you have any thoughts on or concerns about any of the specific budgets that you have in front of you?
Good question. Is that all bio life or do you get revenue, revenue capture?
No, I think it's all from bio life, is it?
I think so.
Mm-hmm, and that. Well, their costs for tests that have been mandated, that will continue until, well.
I'm looking at the revenue.
Oh, okay.
$52 to capture, the 52 on there. 37 on that, that's why is it, if it's captured from bio life.
I think that one had gone down because of they had filed their, one of their exemptions. So some of the property values were able to come down on that. I would have to double check with Miles on that one, but if I recall correctly, there was one of the exemptions were filed on that. Property tax exemption, I think it was on their, was it on a personal?
I'd personally like to know, how do you get exempted?
Let me look into that one. I know I had asked it at some point with Miles because I had known it was the same thing, that one of them had dropped specifically on that property. And I'm not reading the value right now what that, why that one had dropped.
Thank you.
One thing I try and summarize with Sherry when I talk to her about how we put this budget together, you know, really, whatever the Brownfield is able to capture on all their projects, we follow the triage of expenditures under the reimbursement agreements. So whatever we receive, we've already got it pretty well dog-eared into how it needs to go out. It's either going to go into administrative bond payments to develop a reimbursements. And ultimately, once all of those reimbursements are paid off to the developers, you're going to get a situation like we see in, on page 123 for Nestle Down. We're going to be able to pay them off this year. And now, some of that capture will be able to go into that local remediation fund. So we'll be able to fund other projects that the city sees worthwhile for development.
Explain that last one. Goes into other fund that funds.
We have a revolving loan fund.
Oh, it's a revolving loan?
Yes.
Okay, that's what it is. That is there to fund.
Other eligible expenditures.
Uh, I thought, I thought that Brownfield charged people. I thought, I thought that Brownfield charged people coming, looking for Brownfield.
We do. What we, you're talking about...
The five thousand or whatever it was, huh?
You're talking about in developing the plan initially.
Yeah, right.
Yes, we do. That was a policy that the board put in place because we wanted to protect the authority from someone coming in, developing a project, and then they didn't come through with it, we would've invested in having the Brownfield plan done and having done all the state work. So, we do a fix a fee before we even do a Brownfield plan. And once they agree to pay the fee, which basically covers the consulting cost, and then, then it goes through the rest of the process. But, yeah, we did that specifically so that we can not expend funds and then not have a project turn out. And it's worked out very well.
And the revolving fund picks up after these people? One, if you, once they've put down their five thousand or whatever it is, and they're going, they've gone through the testing, the revolving fund?
No, what she's talking about is once the fund is paid off after, in Nestle Down's case, so then the excess tax capture goes into that fund.
Right, right, right.
Which means it can be used in other environmental projects in the city.
Give me an example, like what?
Well, ultimately, I would hope that some of the funds that we capture from our projects might go into the roadway along Lake Shore, that has had some funding issues.
Okay, 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 all right. And that's got a good amount of money in there for... Okay.
And we'll have more in a few years.
I hope, yeah. You have more pages than other people, so I think we're scanning this right now, so bear with us.
Yeah, well, it's just, you know, project by project, you're, you're familiar with, with all of the, I mean, we only have technically four projects. I will add that in the growth of the program, I anticipate probably next year, we're going to have a couple more projects that are going to be coming forth. And again, we, we work with the city on making sure that the value is balanced when we look at a project. But, this year, due to the large amount of construction and thus, construction cost, we actually had at least two projects that pulled back and said, you know, I think I'd like to talk about this next year, when there isn't quite so much construction going on in the city. So, there are some good things, I think, that are, you know, around the corner as well.
I mean, everything looks good here. There's really nothing too controversial. Commissioner Fraser, you have a question somewhere?
Yeah, nothing controversial, but we were at that meeting at the island with, I guess, MML or something, but the people from Hoots said they have more Brownfields than us. They said, how can you, I said, you heard what our mayor said, you build one roundabout, we build three, so we're gonna, he said, if you wanna have more Brownfields than us, you're welcome to have them. We don't wanna have more Brown, I said, well, you ever have some old mines, maybe that counts on, but I was just joking with them, said, don't try and one-up us, we're gonna one-up you. So, maybe we, we, they may have more Brownfields, but we have more development than they do probably, we could, we could push it off that way, but, then I was joking with the lady, your Brownfield rep, I said, you know, I was in the Playground Committee when I was in the Pipe Pack Group and I said, we're gonna, we were gonna do it at the island, now we're gonna do it at Madison Park. Used to be a Brownfield when I was a kid, they said, no, you couldn't get any money from that. I said, come on, we get some money, you know, it used to be a Brownfield, not anymore, now it's the park, but we use some of the money, just to, use a little bit, you know, he said, yeah, you could try, but I don't think you'd do it, you might be able to try, just joking around with her, but, and then look forward to, you know, I'm sure when We Energies does close, they'll have to try and, that might be, be a good Brownfield project for eventually, he said, the lady said, yep, I'm aware of that, I went to the meeting on it and I, that'd be a great thing to do, I mean, I think it'd be a few years before they did anything, you know, they'll have to get the coal out of there, obviously, they're going down to BLP's plant or something like that, but I think this could be a, a big project for somebody, it's great property, just take a while to clean it up. So, I think Brownfield's a great opportunity right there to showcase what you can do, so look forward to you guys, all the hard work you do.
Thank you. Yeah, along that line, looking at the, the power plant and the transformational programs that now the governor is hoping to see. When that was announced, I thought, I couldn't think of any greater transformational project than a site like that, so, you know, there, if that program is in place at that time, it would certainly seem that that would be one to look at because there could be a lot of potential there. And I think the really neat thing about, you know, as you said, with some of the Brownfields and they may have many of them, and my former experience in a Brownfield was at Kinslo Air Force Base. And yes, the things that, that were done there, buildings were taken down and some industry came in, but when you look at the Brownfields here and you look at UPHP and a hundred and fifty people sitting right there in that key spot, the, the building, the, just the things that happen when you have a structure like that and the confidence, the interest, the jobs that come in, because obviously, MEDC looks at jobs and we look at quality of life, of land, of environment, and it makes a really nice compliment, but I think, you know, when you look at our Brownfields, there are a lot of people that are either working there or living around there now and more to come.
Commissioner Plort.
Thank you, Sherry. I would add too that, and you're absolutely right, you need to have a, an excellent Brownfield redevelopment authority, we have that. You're a very, very big part of what makes Marquette shine. Your group has done a great job, just keep up the good work, 'cause it's, it's working for us. Well done.
Thank you. Well, it's a we thing.
It is, it is, and I, and I, you know, your statement about that you fly alongside the city really is very true and there's so many things that we, we do and accomplish that we could not accomplish without the work that you and your committee do. Extremely important, you guys do a great job.
Thank you, and we're having fun, too.
And that's the best part.
It is, yes.
Commissioner Ken Bensy.
I've had a lot of people ask me, where can they find information on the job aspect of our Brownfields? Is that searchable or...?
I think I've had them in all the annual reports, should be on the website as well.
Okay.
We're always happy to provide that information.
Commissioners, how are we doing? Anything else? Good? Good? Sherry, thank you. Brownfield's been very instrumental in how the city's been developing. I mean, it's, it's good that we have it, otherwise, a lot wouldn't be happening here, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry and Mary. Next up, we have Leslie from the Local Development Finance Authority. Take the hot seat, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I hope this might be easy and happy to answer any questions that you have on our 2018 budget request. I do have just a little bit of information as it pertains to the city commitment and the state commitment on the, to the LDFA. For the city, it was a... Yeah, I'm sorry. The state has committed, on the $304,000 line item on our budget, the state's committed, both of these are the state rate, a hundred, over a hundred and ninety thousand and the city commitment is a hundred and thirteen. So, to give that breakdown. I don't know what questions you might have or comments, things I can answer for you.
I'm sorry, okay, Commissioner Baldini.
A question, I, I see this year that taxes are up approximately a hundred thousand dollars. What is that? What specific taxes? Is that based upon our valuation of the city or is there a special?
Correct. The entire city is a LDFA TIF district, except for a few parcels. We excluded We Energies, the hospital, and the Brownfield projects that were going on at, at the time. And the city has committed to four mills and that will be capped at $400,000 per year. The state, however, is not capped and that will continue to grow and the projections, and I don't remember the exact year when it's projected to happen, but at some point, the state will be contributing three dollars for every one dollar the city contributes. But it'd be a while before we get there, but the state does have a significant investment. And for those who maybe don't know, the LDFA actually oversees the contract for the Smart Zone of the city. So, we do have a independent contract with the Smart Zone folks and that is designed to bring in high-tech type jobs to the city. And there is a presentation scheduled at the, I believe it's the September 25th City Commission Meeting and more information will be given at that time.
Follow-up? So, of the $304,000, is that all Marquette City money or is that some state money?
No, as Leslie was pointing out, of that $304,000, a hundred and thirteen thousand is city and the rest is state.
Thank you.
Hey, looks good.
And as Gary mentioned, we will be at the commission meeting and the Smart Zone CEO will be there as well, as an update.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, thank you, Leslie.
Hey, quick question, what do you expect at 2018? It's $304,000. Next year should be much more.
Yep, I think...
Continue, well, would you say it's capped at $400,000?
Well, the city's portion will be capped at $400,000, but the state's portion will continue to grow.
Can I?
Question.
Maybe you can help me understand, the state of Michigan gave a sizable amount of money to the Smart Zone and the Up North Project or the project at NMU. How do all these fit together or is that one of the mysteries of it all?
That'd be, that'd be presented at the September 25th work session. Ray Johnson can explain it a lot better than I certainly can. Yes.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. That presents the Friends of the City portion. Next, we'll get into a couple of departments that we had to reschedule, so we'll ask Dan from the IT Department and I'm not sure if Susan is here as well.
Susan just said, apparently, we're not Friends of the City.
As far as we're concerned, you are.
I'll be, I'll be presenting the PEG and the Tech Services Fund budgets this evening and for those of you who don't recall, PEG is Public Education and Government Funding that was established between the city and Charter Communications as part of a franchise agreement almost ten years ago now. The money or the revenue that's received from the cable provider is received in this PEG fund and cannot be used for any other purpose. And so far, it's looking like we're getting about $12,000 a year in revenue. If we can, I'd like to start on page 131 and look at the departmental fact sheet. It's very simple. There are no authorized positions for PEG. Any activity having to do with administering channel 191, recording, broadcasting, what you see here is done by the IT staff, so there's no additional costs involved. The program statistics pretty much haven't changed, except for a slight increase in what we're providing on channel 191 with city, government meetings, and a smattering of slides and announcements that are on channel 191. It's very simple. Any questions on the fact sheet? If you will, we'll get into the budget sheet on page 132. And as I mentioned, under revenues, PEG receives about $12,000 a year in, in funding from the cable provider. And as usual, you'll notice also that Gary's had to transfer money from reserves to cover the offset between revenue and expenses. And that's only because of the expenses we have in administering the PEG fund. Two of the three expenses that we have budgeted for PEG have to do with equipment leases. Those equipment leases plus budgeting an extra thousand dollars per year for third-party recording puts us over the top as far as what we're needing to spend versus what we're able to get in. The franchise agreement coincidentally expires in September of this year and I think I'll let Susan talk about that just for a minute because we're looking at ways to increase the revenue to PEG so that we don't have to continue to draw from reserves.
At the time, the franchise agreement was signed ten years ago, Charter was using their equipment and their staff to tape the meetings and broadcast them and we were only receiving, and we're still receiving, .25% of their gross revenues for PEG. At the time, that was more than enough, 'cause our expenditures were very low, it was just for the cost of buying supplemental programming and slides that we would run on, on the television channel. Since that time, Charter stopped broadcasting and they also took their equipment with them. So, we had to go out and try to purchase equipment with the revenues that we had and the reserves we built up over the years and we had to buy dirt-cheap equipment that we have that does not function quite well. We're always having a camera breaking down at one point or another. Our audio system was also not upgraded. So, I, in negotiations with Charter to increase the PEG fee from .25%, I've asked for 2%, which is the maximum, that would allow us to really upgrade the system when our lease expires in 2019 for here, so right now, I haven't heard back from them, but that's where we stand, so hopefully, we'll be able to, because this next agreement's for another ten years and we could go through even two systems in that amount of time.
Commissioner Conley.
So, currently, the, the only thing that Charter pays to the city for the privilege of having the franchise and using polls and access throughout the city is 0.25% of the gross?
No, there's two fees that we get from Charter. One is the franchise fee and that's 5% of gross revenues. For those communities, and not every community does, that operates a PEG channel, we can ask for PEG revenue to operate that and that, we're limited by state law to 2% of gross revenues.
So, is that 5% going to the general fund then, that other franchise fee?
Correct. We currently project that at $250,000 for the year and it goes into the general fund.
And is that limited, we're capped at 2% for PEG?
For PEG.
And are we capped at 5% for a franchise fee? So, we're, we're matched out on that part?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, they haven't agreed to the 2% yet. We're waiting to hear back.
Well, or can we just say, pick up your stuff and go?
I'll defer to the attorney on that one.
Well, we can, but I don't know that we're prepared for the replacement.
We're not ready to cut the cord as a city yet.
Not quite yet, no. We're hoping that Charter will work with us with that 2% number, that's the maximum. Certainly, you know, hopefully, we can meet somewhere in the middle or do something better than the, than the 2.5% we have now. Or we could just not broadcast commission meetings as well. I mean, that's an option, we could record them.
I mean, that's an option. We could record them at a much cheaper cost and then replay them later. Or run them on YouTube. It is an option.
Commissioner Plard?
Susan or Dan, do we get any money from DirecTV and Dish Network? They operate in the city. We don't get anything from them, do we? That's interesting. They're not a cable company, though, they're a dish company. So that puts them in a different category. I wonder if there's anything negotiations we could do with them.
I'm not aware of it.
Commissioner Frasier?
Yeah, I don't know if I can get any money from them because they're not a local company there. They have retailers in the area, but they're not a local company. I don't know. I know they broadcast local channels, but I think that's, there's some laws that say they're allowed to have NBC, Fox, and those channels. I don't know if there's a way for the public, and I know when I go to Mackinac Island, they have a little channel, like Mackinac Channel, they show the history and different stuff going on. If there's a way, we could do maybe advertising on this little channel, whatever. Like, maybe NMU has a, probably have some sort of film group or something like that, could do like video, like press scale or something like that. Just different areas around the city, they could, we could play like a Marquette channel when they're not doing commission meetings and have, you know, ticker stuff on there. Maybe viewing of the area, and then maybe other people could advertise, you know, that are like, maybe like kayak companies, or like the sports stores, something like that, have bike rentals, or something that has something to do with tourists. You know, some sort of, not every, you don't have advertising from every mom-and-pop store, but you could have advertising from the companies that are more interested in tourists, you know? Then, you know, maybe the ski home might advertise during the winter or something like that. Just something you guys could look into, maybe see if you could, I don't know if there's a way to get advertising money or have some sort of, you know, history, I mean, people can go to a history museum to get history, so I'd need that. Maybe like a little thing to do in Marquette, maybe with the hotels. I know, Charlie Marquette says the hotels, you know, are complaining about bed and breakfasts. Maybe they would chip in for some, you know, education, they could replay on their, we have the cable TV, they could replay it. Maybe they would help pay the fee or something like that to have more information about, "Okay, stay in a hotel, we're nearby this event," or something like that. Maybe something to look into. You guys get some smart tech people that can look into it for us.
In fact, we've talked about that for a while now, is possibly looking at ad revenue for channel 191. Going forward, Susan and Mike both mentioned that the lease is up in the spring of 2019, and there are a lot of options for us to pursue as far as what we want to do then. And we're gonna have to look next spring at what we want to do as far as continuing to broadcast, whether we want to record and broadcast, whether we just want to record for rebroadcast, use YouTube exclusively. There are a lot of different options to look at, and of course, cost is going to be the determining factor here. But that's what we're going to be looking at in the spring.
You're saying you might stop broadcasting live, the meetings?
I didn't say that.
No, you didn't say that. You say that's a possibility.
It's an option, absolutely. But it's not my call.
Yeah, you know, I don't know what the cost is on that. What has surprised me, and I think the other commissioners, is how many people watch that on Monday night. And I, you know, I don't think that they'll go back and watch the video as much as they do the live meeting.
Should broadcast via webcam or something?
I mean, I can think of just stopping it for one reason, but the obvious reason, which I can't discuss, but...
Sure.
But no, that's a consideration. I mean, people do watch it, which surprises me, and I'm glad they do.
Yeah, I think the only point I'm trying to make here is that all options are gonna be on the table.
Thank you, thank you, yes. Commissioner Conley?
Is there any saving, rather than using, putting it out on a cable channel, to streaming it somehow? Live streaming?
Absolutely.
Is that cheaper?
Right now, we do, we do livestream. While we're broadcasting, we're also livestreaming. And people can view that online right from our website. In the future, if we were to continue to livestream, the cost is almost zero. There's very little cost.
So that's, we'd still have public access, live, at the moment.
For those people who have computers, livestreaming is a great option. For people who only have television sets and rely on channel 191, that's not going to be a very attractive option. Which is why we're doing both right now, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Baldini?
Two questions. One on page 131. Program statistics are in percentage. Do you have any numbers to give to those? Actual 60% of what, or?
That's based on the broadcast time, an allocation of the time that we're using.
Do we have numbers? How many people are actually watching?
No, I wish I did.
Is there any, if there was a way to get it, you probably would, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
I always say there's at least four people watching at all times.
I mean, we hear comments, okay. Secondly, if you're saying that we have to look at this, are you gonna put a group together to start considering what the other options may be along, you know, Commissioner Conley acts about, asks the question about streaming, and you make the point that not everybody has a computer. But are we gonna look at these down the road, some of those other options, and start thinking about them?
Yes. And I, let me be clear here, I'm not the one to make the decision. I will try to assemble a group, but I'm not the one who is going to operate in a vacuum and say, "This is what we're going to do." That's not best for the community.
But we need, somebody's gotta sit down and think about the options and the consequences of the options, yeah?
Yes, and the cost of each, absolutely.
Commissioner Frasier?
You know, streaming is a good option. I mean, I know some of you guys in the tech department are probably have the smart TVs, and they could stream it right over their TV. Maybe we could have an option, like, okay, you could, they could have a group, you figure out somebody to do it and cut the cable and just do streaming. People could look around their computer, if they have a computer, or smartphone, or something like that. I know, not everybody has smartphones or computers, but at least they might have a computer, even if they don't know how to use it. Some people at least have one, they could watch it online if they want. Or, you know, the younger people can watch, if they feel like watching it, they can watch it through TV, through smart TV. Maybe if you figure out, your tech guys, if you do that way, you could cover the little brochure, your tech guys could say, "Hand it to the TV companies that sell TVs around town. Okay, if you sell a smart TV, here's how to access the city channel via your smart TV." And if not, maybe you guys could rent, maybe Mike could rent out your guys to people to go to their his house and hook up, hook up a smart TV in his house to show them how to do their, maybe. You could do it at Conley's house. "Okay, Conley, you have old TVs, but we can hook up the smart TV, and here's how you're gonna watch your friends on City Commission on smart TV. You can do it, Mike."
Commissioner Plard?
Dan, I know you can, you can track the numbers on how many people hit the website. Can you, can you track the numbers about how many people watch via streaming?
I don't think so, but let me follow up on that.
Okay.
And I also want to follow up with Charter to see if they might be able to give us any statistics on viewership on channel 191. I don't know how that would happen, or how they could do that, but it's certainly worth exploring.
They may have some mechanism, I know, but like YouTube, you know, will show how many people have hit a particular video.